Order of the Carney School District Board of Education, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Matt Baker.
Here.
Glenn Broughton.
Meredith Cole.
Here.
John Curran.
Here.
Chris Schweitzer.
Here.
And Foskus.
Here.
Darlene Bailey.
Here. We have a quorum, so next we will adopt and amend the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Post, thank you. School Spotlight, today we have Hawthorne. Yep, you're up.
Okay, first I want to thank everybody, thank the board for inviting Hawthorne here, we're really excited to be here, we've practiced a couple times, so I think we're ready. We're here to talk about our student council, so one of the things we want to do was try to find a way to better foster belonging in our building, and last year we started character assemblies, so this year we took the idea of our Bulldogs of the Month and making them into our student council. So each month we have a new set of students that comes on the council and that allows us to have almost eighty kids by the end of the school year, they get to serve the school in some way. So teachers nominated one of their Bulldogs of the Month to come present at the board meeting. So I have Brenly, Nipker, Elijah, Enderley, John Ness, Tatum, Chambers, Marcia Jorgensen, A.C. Klingensmith, Clive Schweitzer, River McIntyre, Nova Murray, Maladi Appleman, sorry. And then we have Mr. Schweitzer, it's not Clive, it's Grafton Schweitzer, and we have Landon Gladback. So this is our council that's here to present, and I'm going to just kind of turn this over to them, we're going to have them come up and do a slide each, so our younger students will present the headings and then our older students will read the slides. Right, come on up, who's our first one up, come on, John.
Goals of Student Council. Create a greater sense of belonging for students at Hawthorne Elementary.
Provide students with a group to help guide decisions that impact the school community.
Come on up, Tatum.
How are students chosen?
Character trait of the month aligned with our counseling lessons in classroom morning meetings.
Teachers select one student per classroom as the Bulldog of the Month that exemplifies the monthly character trait.
Each month, a new group of twelve students join the Hawthorne StuCo.
Student Responsibility.
Monthly meetings, students discuss and identify issues that need attention around the school.
Current students driven initiatives, playground organization, lost and found issues, school recycling programs, presenting a new character trait to students at the assemblies.
Clive, come on up.
Playground improvements.
Problem, playground balls were not being picked up or properly stored.
Solution, purchase a large wheel trash can for easy transport to and from the playground. Ensure daily collection and storage of playground balls.
Lost and Found Organization.
Problem, lost and found areas was disorganized and cluttered.
Solution, plan to implement a large rack and set of hangers in a consistent location for lost items.
Ensures that lost items are easier to find and return to their owners.
Recycling Program.
Problem, lack of consistent recycling throughout the school.
Solution, introduce a recycling program with dedicated boxes for each classroom.
Encourage a culture of sustainability and responsibility among students.
Meetings and training.
Monthly meetings, student councils now meet every Friday afternoon at the end of the day to discuss and carry out their responsibilities.
Member Rotation, new members join each month while retiring members train the incoming group. This promotes community among students who normally may not connect while also keeping things consistent.
Next Step.
Impact, empowering students to take initiative and lead positive changes in the school environment, strengthening the sense of community and belonging.
Next Steps, continue with monthly rotations and focus new projects identified by the students. Expand the program to include more student leadership opportunities.
You guys have any questions for our group?
It sounds like you're doing a lot, who leads the group? Like, guys take turns, or what, who keeps everybody on focus?
Probably, they, I'll tell you what's interesting, we kind of started this and wasn't sure where it was going to lead, so we just asked the students at the first meeting, "Guys, what do you think we need to work on around the school, what needs fixing?" So we had some, you know, you can imagine, all kinds of ideas, but a few of them led to the playground concern about the playground balls were everywhere and they were left. We had lost and found that our parents could never find again, and so that was a concern. And then we talked about recycling, the fact that we didn't have a consistent way to organize recycling. So those were the three topics we really focused on, and we brainstormed ideas, and they came up with a lot of them. So the nice thing is our older students really help with our younger ones when we do recycling, they'll walk them down through the halls and help gather the boxes, and then we'd all go out together, you can see in the pictures, to take care of some of those things. So we're looking forward to, we're going to do one big project with all eighty-plus StuCo kids at the end of, toward the end of May. And we're going to do a big campus cleanup and do some things there, and then I've got, we have tags that we wear, so when we're on business, everybody knows we're official, we have a little sticker that says StuCo on it. So it's been fun, and I've learned a lot from the process too, so it's, yeah, it's been great, we look forward to doing it again next year. Guys, thank you, good work, good work.
So we also have the Early Education Center with us tonight, and they're going to show a video, I believe. Yeah, if you guys need to go, that's okay.
Hi, I'm Amy Baugh, I'm the principal at the Early Education Center. We've really focused this year on connections, so connecting our programs within our building as well as connecting to the greater community and connecting to the other schools in the district. Earlier this year, one of our teachers, Mary Watkins, came up with another wonderful idea of how to connect our Early Education Center with our, with Carney High School, so I'm going to let her talk a little bit about that project.
Okay, hi, I'm Mary Watkins, five-day pre-K teacher at the EEC. And I contacted Stacy Holtzclaw in January, kind of getting her ideas about how the EEC could connect with some high school kids. I know they're much more inclined to technology and doing some things, so Mrs. Kelly Dale and Mr. Chad Mitchell, he's here tonight, they're junior English class, English III, they're students, I presented our Client Connected Project. The EEC was the client, and their job was to help us promote the EEC. With the new building, with all the programs we have, I just feel like not everybody in the community exactly knows what that building is, but it does, and it was really interesting to even have the high school kids come over and be like, "What is this, what, where is this located?" And so I met with the entire English III class and presented the problem, and then there were thirty-five English III students that participated, and eighteen presentations were given to promote the EEC. And there was a wide range of presentations, from flyers, videos, one group even spoke to the mayor about painting a mural downtown and is like, "How's it ready to go?" And I'm like, "Whoa, hold on a little bit." But brochures, social media mock-ups, newsletters, magazine inserts, their ideas were amazing. So then what I did was, with Dr. Baugh's help, we kind of picked the best one, which was super hard. But they are here tonight, and I'm going to let them introduce themselves, and they're going to give their presentation the way they did for the Client Connected Project. Oh, sorry, oops, sorry, you're going to do this, these are some examples of what they did. So not this group, but just the groups that aren't here tonight, brochures, what it would look like if we had an Instagram page and all of the things, so that's just some ideas that they shared.
Hello, I hope everybody's doing good today, I'm Jackson Stevens.
I'm Ryan Petey.
Ryan Petey, and we came up with an idea to promote the EEC. So some challenges that we ran into was, what do we need to market to actually promote it? Who is the target audience that we need to promote to, and where to market the information? Our plan was to create a short video explaining the benefits of the EEC and what the program has to offer. Share, we want to share this video through the district email, EEC website, or via a social media post, and potentially create more posts or videos showing more in-depth looks of the EEC.
And what we needed to market to parents was that early education is proven to produce increased achievements in test scores and has a lower chance of grade retention. Early education also can boost academic success, social skills, and also further opportunities. And here is the video that we came up with.
Well, there are a lot of benefits to education, so students not only get a good foundation as far as learning their colors, letters, numbers, shapes, and social emotional skills, but they learn how to be good friends and how to interact with one another, how to follow directions from being, from teachers and other just rules of how to be a student in a school before hitting the ground running once they enter kindergarten and then for the rest of their school career.
We provide four different programs in our building, the first program is the Puppy Pound, which is the staff childcare preschool. Starts at birth and goes through five years old. The Parents vs. Teachers Program with Ms. Brittany King is also in our building, and that is available to all Carney School District residents, and that starts at birth as well. We have the early five-day pre-K, which is me, and that services kids that are coming into preschool, so, or to preschool, into kindergarten, so four- and five-year-olds, and they come five days a week to my classroom. And then we have the Special Ed Program, the Early Childhood Special Ed Program, ECSC, and that program services four- and five-year-olds and three-year-olds, excuse me, that qualify for our program.
The services provided here are all free, so nobody is paying for early education services. The one exception to that is that we do support the entire district staff through providing a childcare program. And so staff members who work in the district are able to bring their children here prior to kindergarten for a very reduced rate childcare from birth all the way through kindergarten entry. Well, I think all pre-K programs function with very similar goals and missions. We all want to lay that groundwork for kids to be successful in school once they leave us. So I think that ours is a unique Carney community. I think that just having such a close-knit group of staff and families in this community make it a nice experience where the kids all come to know each other and enjoy each other prior to going to kindergarten, and then all the way through school, it's a fun, close-knit group.
At this time of the year, in March, we're really seeing the progress and the growth. So my favorite part of working here is just looking back at their portfolio and seeing, where did these children start in August, and what skills have they learned? And so the academic part of it is really awesome to see, like, how they're writing their name, their numbers, all the things they've learned, but also just watching them grow and mature and learn how to interact with others and problem-solving, so that's my favorite part, is just to watch them grow through the year.
Well, there are a lot of
This is all the resources we had, do you guys have any questions for us?
What did you learn that you didn't know before that surprised you about the EEC?
I didn't know that they had so many programs that they offered there, I thought it was just a pre-K program, but I didn't know that they offered five different programs, even starting at childbirth all the way up to pre-K.
And I didn't know it was free at all, I thought it was a paid program, so I feel like that's really useful to have in the video, because I feel like that's maybe how a lot of people's minds are.
Thank you all for coming tonight, appreciate your work, hope you got a good grade. Come and take a picture.
Well, the next time you'll just be able to step out and you'll be fine.
You're right. Piece of cake.
We have no public comment tonight, next we have the superintendent's report. Recognitions, oh. Oh, I skipped right past it, sorry, come on up, I skipped ya. Recognitions.
Grateful for the opportunity to speak to you guys again to boast about one of my athletes, Anna Williams here, she's a senior, and she has accomplished some great things, not only this year, but throughout her entire high school career. She didn't start diving until she was a sophomore, and she's three-time conference champion, two-time district champion. She's the first diver in school history to earn All-State honors, she's earned first-team All-State honors twice. This year, her final year, she finished in third, which is, you know, the farthest a diver has placed at the state level in Carney history, both boys and girls. So what she's been able to do is astounding, you know, if you just look at that, but thinking about how she's also been dealing with some major injuries and surgeries and recovery, and the determination and the focus and the hard work that takes to push through that and to continue to achieve and represent Carney and our team so well and so highly is awesome. And we're definitely going to miss her next year, as she moves on to bigger and better things, as she dives in college in South Dakota. But yeah, Anna, incredible senior season, incredible high school career, and couldn't be more proud of her, so, Anna Williams.
Now, have superintendent comments.
Well, I thought I'd take just a couple of minutes tonight and just kind of walk through some questions that we've been fielding in person as we were going through staff meetings, questions that we've received at the district office. I think there's just a lot in the news about what's happening with public ed, and so I just wanted to take a minute or two and walk through that. So in regards to what's happening with the Department of Education, I just wanted to put this in perspective. I think there's been some misinformation on the amount of federal dollars that we receive as a district. So I think we've heard reports that there's concerns that it's going to impact ten, fifteen percent of our budget, you know, in excess of nine million dollars, and I just want to reframe that for people. So the impact that it would have on Carney School District, Carney receives about three percent of federal dollars. A large majority of that is special education. Revenue going to our food program as well as our federal program. So, you know, as we're listening and watching the news, again, we'll make decisions real-time. Probably federal programs is probably the funding that would be at risk to the greatest degree, and that's probably the smallest percentage of federal funds that we actually receive. So again, trying to just reframe that for folks as they're starting to hear about national information, and how does that distill down to the local level? We are probably more closely watching what's happening in Jefferson City. You know, we have a, when you have a new president and you have a new governor, there is a shift, and sometimes it impacts education. So Governor Kehoe, he's very clear on safety and security, he's very clear on his support for economic development. If you happen to catch his State of the State address, he also discussed education. One of the things he mentioned is, in his proposed budget, you know, that would potentially be flat funding for schools. He also referenced open enrollment with the expansion for vouchers. So again, that's his platform as he comes in, legislative session is well underway, and we're continuing to watch a number of bills. House Bill 711 is one that we're watching pretty closely, and that would open up open enrollment. And so for our community, what that would mean is if this board, if it's House Bill 711, school districts would have the choice on whether to participate in the program. And what that would mean is if we received students, we would also receive the state money that comes with the students. We would not receive the local money that comes with them. So in all, for all intents and purposes, there will be some subsidy of education for students that we receive. So again, we're continuing to watch that, probably one of the biggest things we're watching is how the budget develops. The House has passed a proposed budget that looks mirrors very closely the governor's recommendation. Now it's into the Senate, and there's a lot of discussion what's happening in the Senate. With the passage of Senate Bill 727, which was a large omnibus bill last year, there was the promise, or the hope, that there would be two years of increased state funding for public education. And I think that's probably one of the concerns that we're watching, and so we won't know that information and how it impacts schools until probably about May ninth. So again, we're watching that pretty closely. At the county level, one of the things we're also watching last year, state legislature passed Senate Bill 190. And what that does is, that's the senior citizen tax credit, and so during reassessment years, it would basically put a cap on the amount of additional revenue that a school district could receive for those individuals who are sixty-two years or older. So it's not a loss of revenue, however, we would not realize increases for anybody whose property values are sixty-two, if they're aged sixty-two years or older. So again, it would impact the potential revenue increase that we could receive. And when you look at revenue increase, whether it's at the local level or the state level, that's how we increase pay for our teachers. We know the cost of everything is going up right now, our contracted services for food, contracted services for transportation, utilities costs, everything's going up. Benefit costs are going up, so again, we're really monitoring closely what's happening at the local level as well as the state level. Moving on to local information, on April fourth, I want to thank Representative Mark Myrath. He took the time to come into Carney High School, and he recognized our girls wrestling, the Golden Girls, as well as some other individual accomplishments. Not only did he do that, he took the time to tour the school, visit with our teachers, visit with our coaches, and got a firsthand experience on what it looks like day-to-day. And I think that's really important to have that type of relationship with our representatives, someone who's willing to come in, listen, and ask questions. So I was really appreciative of his time. Also, on April eleventh, Carney District Education Foundation, they had their prize patrol, and they distributed over eleven thousand dollars in grants to fourteen different staff members across the district. So that's always a fun day when you get to disrupt a classroom for a short amount of time, present a really big check that they can't cash immediately, and, you know, kids are all excited and are very proud of their teachers. So also, on April second, we had a really great celebration. Mandy Salbenson from the high school, she, last year, started the Future Educator Signing, and so she's really done an amazing job. We have eleven high school graduates that will be going into education, two of which, if I'm correct, Dr. McMaines, will be coming back to work for us as paraprofessionals. So it's super exciting to see that program growing, again, the numbers for her class enrollment continue to grow, and so look forward to that. Tonight, we also have a spring sports college signing, seven student athletes will be signing with colleges tonight, so that's very, we're very proud of their work, both as athletes and students. And one last final thing, Future Business Leaders of America, we had seven students finish in the top four that will go on to compete at Nationals, and we want to give a shout-out to Bennett Freeman, who happened to be the state champion in Business Concepts. So a lot of great things. in business concept. So a lot of great things. Our kids continue to do amazing work, supported by our amazing teachers. So it's a great spring. So happy to turn over.
Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda.
Move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next, information items. First one is board vacancy. We have received a written resignation from Lynn Broughton, who was a member of our board that has resigned effective immediately because of relocation, accepting a new job in another community. And so we have a vacancy and this is the process that we will utilize to fill that vacancy. Interested candidates may apply for the vacant position through May 8th, and there are documents that can be obtained either attached to this agenda if anyone's online looking or by contacting the district office. Selected candidates will be interviewed in an open session meeting on May 21st, 2025 at 4:30. The board then will vote to select the new board member at the June 18th regular scheduled meeting. If selected, the new board member would serve until April 6th of 2027 election. Mr. Broughton was in the second year of his term, so he has one year term left. So you stay on cycle in these types of things. And so the person who is selected for the role will serve one year and then be eligible for election if they would so choose to file. Any other questions from board members on that, anyone?
That's 2026, not 2027?
Oh, yes, that is 2026. You're right. All right. Very good. Bond project update.
Hello.
Good to see you all again. Looking at Carney Elementary. John, next time you're out there, let me know so you can show me those walls that are leaning.
Okay, got it.
You're seeing the two-story addition here. I think if you guys have been out and kind of just walked these sites, you've seen probably some huge progress on these projects. I think from last month to this month, we've made huge strides. Over the last month, at the two-story addition at Carney Elementary, structural steel has been completed, slab-on-deck has been completed for the second floor, parapet blocking and framing has been completed, roofing has also been completed, first and second floor framing is completed. We've started overhead mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and fire sprinkler rough-in. Window frames and glass are delivered on-site. Interior frames have been installed. CMU at the restrooms and the gang restrooms is in place. Exterior waterproofing has started, will be complete here in the next week. And on the next photo will show the front entrance where the new media and new entrance will be. Phase one of that, for the most part, is all framed in, it's dried in, roof is on, and we're getting ready to start phase two, which would be that main entrance coming into the school where we had to do some work with Mitch and Erica to kind of redirect traffic on how parents will get in and out of the school for pickup and drop-off. That work will start May 1st. There you're looking at Dogwood, again, another project, that's another school. It's huge strides and work done. Since last month, the brick facade will be complete by the end of this week. Window frames have been installed. Roofing is complete, so it's basically dried in at this point. And interior framing is in place, and now we're doing all the in-wall rough-in. That just shows us again, that's second interior photo of the framing and all of our MEP rough. And then we'll jump over to Hawthorne. Hawthorne, that photo you see where we have the weather barrier installed, overhead MEP rough-in is completed, electrical panels are installed, all of the CMU masonry is complete, exterior window frames and glass are installed, roofing is completed, and then we'll start brick facade next week. So lots of progress. So again, that's kind of just an interior photo of some of the framing and MEP rough at Hawthorne. Any questions?
Behind Hawthorne, where we've moved the dirt back into that field, is that a permanent solution or is that going to be reclaimed for?
It will be reclaimed when we're done.
It will be reclaimed. Okay.
Looks great. Haven't had enough rain. Some of us are wishing for rain. You're probably not, but.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. No, Ben? Ben? No, nothing? Do you have anything else? You're just here to watch, okay. It's making sure, it's a random meeting when you don't stand up and talk to us, so I just want to make sure we weren't leaving you out. All right. Financials. Ginger.
Included in your packet are the most recent forecast for the year, and we're coming in at 20%. We have received approximately 98% of our property tax as of yesterday. Were there any questions about any other reports?
Okay, thank you. Next, we have a program evaluation for technology.
Written.
I thought I said written. Did I say something different? We have a report, so everybody take a look at that. If you have any questions. Ryan, thank you. All right, moving on to action items. Amendment number 10.
Move to approve amendment number 10 with Newkirk Novak as presented.
Second.
Did you say?
I said it.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, everyone. Amendment 10 has four deferred maintenance projects on it that Newkirk Novak has agreed to take on and oversee. The addition of some ladder accesses on the roof at the high school, security film throughout the district and middle school facade on the west and north sides of the exterior of the middle school, and kitchen hood replacement at Hawthorne. Be happy to talk about any of those projects if there's questions as well. The guys from Newkirk are around as well.
The security film, is that just on the, is that on throughout?
We would be happy to talk about that in an executive session.
Okay.
It's a safety issue.
It's a safety issue, yep.
Any other questions?
And these are all finished bids. This is the number?
No add-ons, no, nothing, right, Ben? Okay.
This is still bond money?
Yes, sir. Off the 22 bond, yes.
Ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Quality roofing.
Move to approve the addition to the agreement with quality roofing as presented.
Second.
Okay, so on the previous amendment 10, you saw that the middle school facade, which is the wall itself, is included in deferred maintenance package for that. As we got into that project, realized that that wall ties into a soffit and a fascia behind the gutter system. Quality Roofing is the roofing company that won the bid for the middle school roof. That includes the metal top cap along the edge. It makes sense, at least for us, to pursue the going from top cap, from fascia into the soffit, and then down into the wall where the Newkirk project starts. If you've been around there currently, that is all basically different types of woods as it progresses down from south to north and then across the north side, some being rotten and needs to be replaced. So the proposal is to have Quality Roofing continue their work from top cap down the fascia behind the gutter replacement into the soffit and down to the wall where their Newkirk job starts. That would include removal of anything rotten and some of it will have to be exploratory on how, when they start going backwards from the exterior into the wall. So that is the proposal, to have them add that to their scope. That'd be a summer project, obviously, in coordination with Newkirk Novak and their project on the roof they already have.
What's the warranty on that?
That would be their 25-year warranty, same as the?
So it would tie into the roof?
It would be a Garland warranty.
Gotcha.
It'd be continuation of the Garland metal and their warranty at the end for 25.
Okay. Thank you.
The guttering system that's going to come down, is it being replaced or reused?
Replaced.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next, we have purchase from Musco Lights.
May I ratify the purchase of Musco Sports Lighting as presented?
Second.
Okay, this is a ratification of purchase for four stadium poles and lights from Musco. As you know, we had one of our light poles snap with some high winds in the middle of March. As we investigated that with the pole companies, we had an independent tester, inspector come out to check out the poles, the remaining three. And basically, the two poles on the north side of the stadium had a bracket that holds a speaker, called a speaker bracket. And the pole that snapped, it appeared that it started right at that bracket. And on the existing pole that was still upright on the north side, there was, the inspector found some small cracks along that weld of the bracket. So very likely that has created some form of a defect or weak spot. Wind caused it to break. Wind caused some cracking on the other one. So we have an insurance claim. Insurance agreed to take care of the cost for the two northside poles. When we investigate this, no one produces or puts up metal halide lighting, which would be what we have. It's all of it's LED. So we would have two new LED lights on the north side. Different type of light, projects differently. Along with that, we have the inspector that looked at our poles, although there wasn't cracking on those two southside poles, he failed both poles due to some inadequate welds where the control boxes are or access boxes are, and some handholds to get into work on the wiring. So we would be tasked with solving that problem if we kept those two poles on the south side of the stadium. So we looked at what it would cost to replace two poles, what it would cost to replace four poles. And in the best interest of long-term plans for the district and the stadium, we opted to have four poles replaced, used Musco, who is an industry leader. They have, they had the only 20, although we passed this through and we called two other companies, Musco was the only one that has a 25-year warranty on materials and labor. And it felt like that had a big plus for us. And they were the only ones that really had a true dollar amount when it came down to it and didn't exclude concrete work and didn't exclude haul off and things like that. So.
Couple of things that I would add. The existing poles are 30 years old, right? So I mean, we're looking at end of life for them. And just to reiterate what Eric said, you know, we don't want two different types of lights, you know, that would be problematic as well. So 30-year-old poles, it's a good sound recommendation, yep.
Asking for approval or ratification of that?
And the timeline was another factor that we looked at, yeah.
Good point. Musco was able to, from the start of process to end, get things delivered, installed in five weeks, which still gives our spring sports an outside chance to participate under, on their normal time light period and have access for programs throughout the summer and not have to wait on materials to arrive in the summer and then have a guessing game going into fall.
And the poles are 29 years old, because I was a senior in high school when those poles were put in place. It made me feel a little old. We're saying 30, can we do 29?
Okay.
John, when you get older, the roundy is better. Okay. Thanks for all y'alls work on this. I know it was a lot in a short amount of time. It wasn't necessarily expected. Musco certainly is the leader in all this, so makes good sense. Ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. All right. American Boiler.
Move to approve the agreement with American Boiler, over $50,000 purchase as presented.
Okay, a while back, you all approved?
I need a second on that.
Second.
Thank you. Almost made it, Eric.
So a while back, you all approved an HVAC purchase for rooftop units on four buildings throughout the district. All along, we have had the inclusion of replacing these two Southview boilers as part of, not part of that dollar amount, but in the big picture, deferred maintenance for HVAC equipment. Those two boilers were always in the plans. The lead times just weren't as long, but that out to bid through the RFP process, four bidders came in. American Boiler came in as the second low bid, but was the only, was the lowest bid who had all pieces of the RFP complete. It was a $3,000 difference or a 1.3% difference from the low bid to American Boiler. They've done work for us in the past and recommend that we have them supply and install the two replacement boilers at Southview.
Questions? All right. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Strike Security.
Move to approve the agreement with Strike Security for over $50,000 purchase of LineWise filtering, LineWise monitor, and ClassWise classroom management for the three years as presented.
Second.
Does the board have any questions? We can have Ryan come up if you do.
Any questions? Okay. All right. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Saved money on that one.
American Digital Security.
Move to approve the agreement with American Digital Security as presented.
Second.
Does the board have any questions in regard to the agreement with American Digital Security, ADS, additional cameras?
All new stuff for the new buildings, right? Or, all right.
That's right.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Sumner One.
Move to approve the agreement with Sumner One as presented.
Second.
Ryan, do you want to come up and talk about this? There's a lot of work that goes into copier contracts. Yep. And so Ryan's done some great work, and so I thought I would just share this. I think it's important he shared this with the board.
Good evening. So with this year being the sixth year of our current copier lease, the copiers are now at their end of life and need to be replaced with new machines. So we put out an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications for interested copier firms to submit their qualifications and preliminary pricing. Upon review of the respondent, Sumner One was selected to proceed with a print study and to negotiate a copier contract. The print study not only looked at our copiers and their locations, but also the locations and age of all printers in the district. Sumner One submitted recommendations for replacing some of our printers while decommissioning many underutilized printers. And the recommendation from Sumner One will lower our copier and printer device count from 105 to 57. Building principals reviewed and approved the changes to their building print setups, and we are excited to streamline printing in the district. The total annual lease and maintenance payment for the new copiers and new printers totals $92,811.60 per year for five years.
That's a lot of work.
That's a lot of work. So I appreciate Ryan reaching out and actually doing the print stu-
So I appreciate Ryan reaching out and actually doing the print study and working with building principals to make sure the placement of copiers is in a convenient location. Any questions for him?
Sounds good. All right. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Agreement with Thompson Reuters?
Move to approve the agreement with Thompson Reuters as presented.
Second.
So happy to entertain any questions in regards to this product. It's a new software, and again, I may have Ryan come up here in a second in case there happened, or Tammy's here as well in case there happens to be any questions. You know, we're, we would like to move to residency verification on an annual basis for all grade levels. What this does is it looks at publicly available documents for us to make that determination. It sets kind of a criteria score. And any, anybody that's, and Tammy, 85 or above, we're good. And then we get to the side. And that way, we would narrow to just a handful of, probably 10 to 15% of families that we would have to do residency verification on. So, and that way, we could do it, again, all grade levels on an annual basis. Tammy, is there anything I'm missing? Oh, okay. Any questions?
Questions? Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next, agreement with Aware Health.
Move to approve the agreement with Aware Health as presented.
Second.
So Aware Health is a cost containment strategy that we would pilot for the months of May and June. It is a physical therapy teledoc service that's designed is to provide physical therapy via teledoc, of course, in lieu of surgeries. MSK, our Muscular Skeletor, is our biggest spend on our medical plan right now. And of course, it is in the, in the nation. It's the big trend right now. But this is a provide, provide care earlier, free of charge. It's for staff. This pilot will be free of charge as well. Just looking into it to see if it's the right fit for, for us.
Okay. Ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Walsworth Publishing Yearbook.
Move to approve the purchasing agreement with Walsworth Yearbooks as presented.
Second.
And this is just, we've used Walsworth in the past. They did go to bid. They got another bid that was slightly less, but they said just the professional development that Walsworth gives both the students and the staff, it's, it's pretty priceless to them, so they would like to remain with Walsworth.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next, the approval of agreement with Hope.
Well, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I just, I, I want to recognize that Jostens is local, and I think they give back a lot to the school district. This was my only statement.
Okay.
That was it.
All right. Thanks.
Do you want to vote? Yeah, that's fine.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry.
Just want to record it correctly.
Okay. Hope Squad Inc.
Move to approve the agreement Quote with Hope Squad Inc. as presented.
You have a second?
I will second it. So we are bringing this back. Last month, if you remember, Amanda Texter, along with one of the facilitators from Hope Squad, came and gave an overview of the program that we would like to implement grades four, five, and six and seven for the upcoming school year. And I'm going to give a brief overview, and Jennifer, if I misspeak, please feel free to jump in and clarify. Remember, the intention of Hope Squad is to build leadership in students. Again, kids, when we get into social situations, kids in difficult times tend to talk to other children. And so one of the things with Hope Squad is we would, or the students would nominate and actually elect two individuals from each grade level. Is that correct?
No, students would not elect. They would nominate students that they felt were trustworthy and kind. Kids who they could talk to, and they would nominate that, and then it would go to, to staff to select them.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. And so, again, so we're talking about a limited number of students that would participate in the program. We, each school would have two facilitators, which would receive a stipend for facilitating the program. And students and staff would get training. And it's really about kids intervening, being good listeners, and also modeling what it means to, if you see something, say something, right? And again, it's kind of building those leadership skills. So other, this is not uncommon in the Northland. I believe there's, Smithville uses it, as well as some other Northland schools.
Kansas City, yeah.
So I believe Smithville's used it for the past three years, and they've had good experience. I think the intention is, you know, maybe at some point, we evaluate if it's approved, if that's something that, as, as it progresses up through the systems, is something that we can eventually transition away from signs of suicide. So that's been some of our internal discussion. So with that, happy to open it up to any questions you have.
I have a question. So I know there are other schools, you say, are using this, such as Smithville. Are they at the same grade levels, or are they, do we, do we know?
Yeah, they've expanded it further.
Where, where did they start? Did they start at a higher level?
No, they started at the elementary. Yeah.
Well, here's, here's my concern. You know, I have two kids in elementary school, and I think, I, I get the premise of what, the idea of what we're trying to accomplish. I don't think, I think at an elementary level, in my opinion, kids should be kids. They shouldn't be worrying about, I need to check on this person, or just constantly, their focus is, what's wrong with somebody? And I think that we're leading kids in the wrong direction at that level. I think we're creating issues potentially that don't exist.
Well, think about the pressure that kid has to be put under, too, that if this kid does, you know, like, we're, we're putting a lot of pressure on that kid to be worried about things that aren't necessarily their focus. Should be education.
I think every kid's different, right? We have introverts, we have extroverts, and some of those signs that, that kids may be looking for may not necessarily be signs at all. But if you ask that same kid over and over, hey, are you okay? What's wrong? Well, eventually, that kid's going to think, maybe something is wrong.
Yeah, and I think, I think you're getting into the role and the responsibility of the kids themselves. So let's talk about why fourth and fifth grade, why we wanted to start there, and then we'll talk, and then maybe Jennifer, you can clarify the roles of the students who are selected, because I think, I think it's a two-pronged thing. So fourth and fifth grade, their worlds expand. You think about K through three, they're with a dedicated teacher all day, right? So in grades four and five, you start to rotate classes. And that's where you start to see a little more emergence of student behavior, right? And a little more natural conflict starts to emerge. Kids are great at fourth and fifth grade. I'm not, I'm not saying that, but, but you can more readily see it. And I think that's the opportunity for, because you don't have that isolated teacher monitoring on a day-to-day, you know, every period basis. So I think that's the part of the rationale for why fourth and fifth grade. And to your point, so how, how much are we asking those students to carry, right? And, and I think, I don't believe, you know, there's a role for counselors. There's a role for children's fund. They're not to take, they're not to take the place of that. It's really to model reporting system. And I don't know, Jennifer, do you want to elaborate on that?
Well, and they emphasize that strongly, that these kids are not trained to be counselors. They are not meant to take on anything. They just, if, if they hear something, they report it. Right now, I mean, kids are talking to kids anyway. They are. It's giving kids the tools to know what to do with the information that they're receiving. Kind of the kids that get nominated for this are those kids that are kind of the natural ones that other kids go to and will tell things to. I mean, they report it, they're done. They, they, and they also have a check-in system with those kids that the adults are trained, the supervisors are trained. They always check in with these kids to make sure that they're not taking on anything themselves. Only kids that have, I mean, it's total transparency with the parents. There would never be a child that would be on this without the parent's consent. And the parents are also asked to do a little training themselves if they have a child that is in this program.
Well, I'm not naive enough to, to sit here and think that kids at the fourth and fifth grade level can't suffer or can't have thoughts, right? But I personally think that, I think we're starting to be young. I, I have a first grader, I have a third grader, and I have a sixth grader. And I think that we have small classes, we have a great staff. And I think that this, this is something that our staff should be picking up on at that age more than tasking other children to, to try to pick up on those cues. That's my opinion.
How is this different than like the Huddle Up program, or the Huddle Up, or any other program that we have?
I think Huddle Up is different. And I, I think Huddle Up is really, really started with principles as a way to build a sense of community. Huddle Up touches every student in the school, right? And so they're assigned to a Huddle Up teacher with, that has varying grades, where kids get to connect around unique interests. I mean, I think each school's a little bit different. This is very, this is a very targeted group of students that demonstrate leadership skills, that have some training, that, you know, really are models for their peers. So I, I think that it serves a different function. And just like in academics, you know, we, we want to have multiple tools in our toolbox, right? We can't fix everything with just one approach. And so having some variance helps to build capacity in kids. It helps to build capacity in adults. So.
At what point do you do too many programs? And you're, you continue to go all these extra programs and you lose your focus on what we're here to do, which is teach kids how to learn?
Sure, academic instruction.
And authentic literacy, right? Like the things that we focus on.
Read, write, discuss. Yep. Absolutely. And so I, you know, when I look at this is, I don't see this as taking time away from the structured day, right? So this is, this is equipping kids, as things are happening, we have a better, better way of addressing it in the moment. And so I don't think it's competing with instructional time. And that's a good point you bring up.
Kids aren't taken out of the classroom to be part of this?
They are, they're, they're trained, yeah.
Out during the class day.
And there's some, there's some after-school time also. You know, I might mention that, you know, we do our, our student survey, and there's a, a couple of things. And I know these are, these numbers seem very positive. One is, how much do you agree that you belong and are accepted at school? Well, you know, we're like, we're doing great. We've got 70% of kids that feel like they are, they belong and they're accepted at school. We've got 30% that are reporting that they don't feel that way.
Is that throughout the whole school district?
Mm-hmm. I mean, that's.
There's a mental health crisis in our country right now.
Absolutely.
And anything that teaches kids to be, to have empathy and takes away that stigma of asking for help is valuable.
You know, and another one of the questions is, how much do you agree that students have access to resources and support to help with their emotions and relationships at school? And it's great that we have 73% that feel positive about that. But we have 27%, and that's a lot of kids. And in any way that we can help them feel that sense of belonging or, or train kids to have empathy for other children, because we know if we do not teach these kids empathy at the elementary, by the time they get to middle school, it's hard. It is hard to teach them empathy once they get to middle school. They need to have it in elementary. They need to see those kids that don't have anybody to play with on the playground and have somebody that is, you know, recognizing these things.
You know, you, you start to see that sorting of peer groups as early as fourth grade, right? And you really start to see it fifth grade before they go on to middle school. And so I, I think it's just something to be, that's the reason, part of the reason why we've looked at that age span.
Is there an opportunity to reallocate these dollars to things we're already doing, to programs we already have happening in this area? That would do the same, or?
So one of the things, and I, you know, we've talked about this before, is I, I feel like we need to strengthen tier-one behavior protocols, right? And this is, this kind of falls within that tier-one behavior protocol, right? An area where we need to grow. I think we've got the children's fund that can do the small group therapy, or the individual group therapy, or art, or music, all sorts of, but those are pretty intensive supports. What we want to try to do is address it in the, when it's in the classroom, right? Does that make sense? But to answer your question directly, could those be reallocated? Yes, they could be reallocated. Do we have a definitive plan? Working on a plan?
Although that's money that's been built into children's funds, so it would have to be approved by children's funds, so.
Right. But has it already been approved if we're already doing the therapies? Is that what you're saying? Like you, like the music therapies that we already have in place?
Right.
Can we not take X amount of dollars and put it towards the therapies that we already have in place? So if those have already been approved, can we reallocate that to it?
Well, that, we're dealing with another governing body, so, I mean, we could make the recommendation, but.
Yeah, we can, we can ask.
But they would actually approve it?
I know there's been a lot of conversation about this, this week among several of us individually. And I thought it was important. I went back and looked at the video of last month when we had the presentation and tried to answer some of the questions that I thought were there. One being concerned about the younger grades. This is a fourth and fifth year, fifth grade program. And it's my understanding that it's usually two students per classroom. And it's a voluntary participation by, beyond recommendation, and the parents have to approve it. And so not a lot of students per school are really involved in the program. And I also heard the concern, and there's age-appropriate training, so that fourth and fifth graders are trained very differently than high school students would be in terms of, of how to look for their peer behavior. And also, some concerns I heard that, that would take, put more on the teacher's plate. And I think that that has been talked about, but it was also talked about that night, is teacher involvement is minimal because the team leaders. And one thing that was not clarified that I asked, that I think was important, and Dr. Miller clarified it tonight, is that that would be extra duty, and those two team leaders would be paid at that level. The other thing, and I think, again, going back to the video, I think that they said most of the student involvement of those that were chosen would be before or after school. So the other thing that, that really stuck with me, though, as, as I was looking at this, is, is our role, and our role as policymakers. And I understand and respect that we all have children and have them in different places in the district, and, and that's a, that affects our thinking. We can't help that it doesn't, and it should, it should affect our thinking. But one thing stuck with me when I went back and looked at the video, something that I don't think any of us did. And if we did, please speak up if you did. But we were strongly encouraged by the presenters to talk to other districts, specifically Liberty, specifically Smithville, and board members at those districts. And I know I didn't do that, even after we were encouraged to, because I felt pretty good about the program. But after all the conversations we've heard, I think that's something that we should do. Because we, we do that, on other things, we encourage our administrators to do that, is they, they look at programs. And so because this is not a policy situation, this is a program situation, which we tend to usually give that responsibility to our administrators. If we have objections about that, for whatever reason, I think it's kind of our due diligence to try to maybe do a little bit more research. So I would encourage us to think about that. Because I think that, the last thing I would say is our number one focus needs to be protecting our children. And if we have an opportunity for a program that can protect our children, any child, no matter what, one or two or whatever, and if we don't take the opportunity to do that, that would be unfortunate.
Thank you.
I appreciate your, you going through that and critically thinking about it. My, my only concern is the possibility of creating issues where none exist. Right? That's, that's where my mentality goes. If we, if we keep discussing something that most kids may not even be aware of, I, I just think it's.
Wouldn't, but saving one child, wouldn't that be worth it?
It, it would, but on the flip side of it, if causing that problem with one child, is it worth it? Are we, are we creating?
You're talking about this?
It's almost like the analogy, watch TV, right? And you see the, all the pills that you take, and you see all the issues, and you're like, holy crap, I've got 10 of the 12 of those, maybe I have that problem, right? Like, you're almost like looking to have a problem.
I'm trying to look at this from my perspective of my kids who, what, right, have a sixth, sixth grader or seventh grader now, and then a third and a first. And I'm trying to understand where they were and where they are now, what they're exposed to and what they're not exposed to. And I think a lot of the issues that, that maybe.
And as a parent, you can opt out.
Well, they're still going to have those kids in their, the reality is, when you're in a classroom with 20 other kids, two of them are wearing shirts around that say that they're the leader. You can't just walk away and say, it didn't happen, right? I can't ignore it. It's going to be a part of your classroom and a part of the focus.
Teaching empathy to kids is important, just like Dr. Miller said. Because when they get to.
get to middle school, they're going back.
I don't disagree with the empathy. I don't think anyone's claiming that that's not the case. I think that we're, the question on the table is, is this the right program? Because here's my question, would we pay for this if Children's Fund wasn't going to pay for it?
I mean, I think it's a strategy that we would, we would consider. We know that we, we need tier-one supports. We, we do.
So would we pay for it? Yes?
It's, it's a very cost-effective program, and it's, it's evidence-based, it's had incredible success. I mean, it's been around, it's stood the test of time.
I just think you're losing your focus.
Rudy and Smithville are the, like, two closest districts, is that right? Are there other?
If you mentioned North Campus City.
If we were to a different age group, I, I would have a different perspective, but...
You prefer that it starts later.
I, I agree. Because I think at that age, kids are exposed to a lot more than they are at an elementary age.
Do you think it would be helpful if, and, and maybe would it be helpful for us to pull, I don't know, maybe even, um, student records, like aggregate data on discipline? And where we start to see that start to emerge? And it's not necessarily just discipline, but it, I mean, it gives you a flavor for where we're, I don't know, maybe we could pull some data.
Behavioral changes and...
Through power school, right? And, and I think that's really where the fourth, fifth grade is coming in. And I, I get what you're saying. I mean, to me, the number-one skill that kids should be learning is active listening, right? It's just, it's not going in and checking. It's if you, if you're hearing it, how do we respond appropriately?
I mean, and quite honestly, this is the, I mean, this year, we have a, a full-time, um, behavior interventionist at our middle school, because that's, that's where that, um, the, the peer-to-peer disrespect, that's where it is so prevalent. Um, and, and it's, if we could...
You said middle school?
Yeah, so...
That's not fourth and fifth grade?
Yeah, but...
Correct. I, I was going to say, if we could teach these kids the empathy piece before they get to middle school, so there isn't all the peer-to-peer disrespect. I mean, once they hit middle school, it is hard to curb it.
Do we do anything to teach empathy right now at our, at our elementary age?
They do counselor lessons.
Character education.
So, so we've started that process?
Sure. Mm-hmm, yeah.
It's not like it's a key component that we just have neglected. We, we, we address it as best we can.
It's an area where we probably need to strengthen, right? So...
And, and this is something our, our social workers were involved in, our counselors were involved in this, our, um, the administrators, they went to Smithville, they looked at the program, um, we met on it afterwards, I mean...
You've done your due diligence.
I feel that we...
Like elementary principals went to the districts?
They went to, they went to, I won't say every one of them. Um, Amanda Texture invited all of them and some of them. I know at least two of the elementary principals went, counselors went, I know the middle school administration went. And then we all came back together and discussed it, um, as a group, and everybody was, um, in favor of this program.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, are we ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, since we have six members that did not pass.
I'm sorry, Bree, did you?
I was the yes.
Were you a yes? Okay, I'm sorry.
So as a three-three vote, is that something where we need to do, bring more information? Or is this just, just for a point of clarification, just so I have...
Well, I, I think we've had a month here. I mean, we just heard about this last month. This is one thing, I guess, that I, I would like to see much sooner than, let's look at a presentation, the next month we're voting on it. I mean, if we've had months to do due diligence and had faculty members and other schools seeing this firsthand, um, the rest of us have. I hate to say, we have full-time jobs also outside of this, so trying to find the time, I, I think we should just be allotted a little more time, um, or maybe be involved in some of those, those meetings or some of those opportunities to really witness this firsthand.
Committee, be a part of the task force coming back.
I would like to, I mean, I'll reach out to other board members, because I did not do that. So, um, I, I understand Matt's concern, and I agree with it to an extent as well. But also I think...
I, I can, I agree with that too. I mean, I, we were given, we were asked or given the opportunity to reach out to other districts, and as a board, we did not do that. And so, um, yeah, I think that's, then potentially bring it back and have a further discussion about it.
Sure. And maybe even on the work session, if we, there's a portion about governance where we talk about clarity and where we involve board members and, because we bring programs forward all the time, right? For recommendation. So clarity for staff, you know, when, 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 when does board, when do board members want to be involved, right? So, um...
I'd like to see clarity in like what, what, what all these programs look like in the grades and where it's all happening, so I know. I don't feel like I have a clear eye. I just want to know of when's, what's starting, what we're doing, and how it all fits, because I think sometimes it feels out of context, so I just want to know what's happening. So, oh, I see how that's supporting this and what's going on, how it all connects.
I mean, and I'll be honest with you. I mean, um, you know, one of the things we've tried to do is, you know, you don't want to, I don't want to discourage building principals from taking risks and trying something new, right? And so, and we, we have pockets of that. Uh, middle school did I am notice this year, right? Tried, tried to do some of that same type of work, realized it wasn't a good fit. So, you know, they were interested in pursuing this as opposed to I am notice. So I get your point. Um, comprehensive lists, uh, that might be, we can work on that. Um, there, there's just a lot of things happening, and sometimes it's just building principal initiative and things are happening, and they're doing great work, that's not necessarily run through the district, right? And it's not necessarily a formal structured program, much like the Huddle Up, right? That was just a, it was a good practice.
Okay. Any other comments on that? All right. Moving ahead to Project STEM.
Move to approve the agreement with Project STEM as presented.
Second.
Yes, this is a, um, a platform for, um, our computer science teacher, Chase Tolson, at the high school. He's wanting to expand the computer science program. He's doing an awesome job. Um, it's great, some of these computer science classes can also be taken as a math credit for kids that don't want to take the, uh, fourth higher-level math. So, uh, this is a pretty inexpensive, um, curriculum for him, so, um, and he's super excited about it, so.
Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Board policies?
Move to approve the following board policies on first reading, C-140-P, C-155-P, G-235-P, I-100-P, I-140-P.
Second.
This is the first reading, so we'll see him again. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. All right. Board member comments?
Um, I just have a little note that I wanted to read for tonight. Dear Carney School District, please allow me to leave you with a few words. Every person who comes to our community table, however small or, or different, has something to offer, offer our humanity. When we take the time to get to know others and we listen to each other's stories, mindsets begin to evolve. We begin the movement from exclusion to inclusion, from fear to trust, from being closed to being open, from judgment and prejudice to forgiveness and understanding. I implore all of you to treat every child with compassion and care so that our district and our community continues to grow, no matter who comes to our table. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. It's been an honor to serve my community where I've been a student and a teacher. Thank you.
John, do you have any comments?
Nope, thank you. No, enjoyed it.
Very good. Well, John and Meredith, um, we both appreciate your service to the board. Meredith, yours has been one term, and we appreciate your, your time and the perspective that you've brought as a teacher, as well as a grandma and a mom and longtime community member. And, uh, John, this is your third term.
Yep.
So thank you for your service for the past nine years and your perspective in, um, keeping us on track with policies. I'll pick that one out for sure. Maybe a few other things as well, but, uh, thank you for, for your service to the board. We really appreciate it. We are all, um, we all sit here because we, we want to be here and we want to serve our district, and, um, we like the free dinners we get once a month from our great food service people. We do appreciate those. We'll have to stay and feed a steak tonight, which is a one-year deal, which is very nice. But, um, but no, it's, um, indeed a time commitment on your part and your family's part, so thank you for your service.
Absolutely.
Okay, next, the certification of the election.
Move to certify the election results, naming Jason Clint and Christina Lindsay as the incoming board members.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
We need to roll call this.
We got to roll call that one.
I forgot. Roll call, please.
Matt Baker?
Yes.
Lynn Broughton?
Meredith Cole?
Yes.
John Kern?
Yes.
Bruce Whitezer?
Yes.
Nick Vaskas?
Yes.
Darlene Bailey?
Yes.
I did not need to call Lynn Broughton, sorry about that.
Okay, dissolution of the board.
Move to dissolve the 2024-2025 Board of Education.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Matt Baker?
Yes.
Meredith Cole?
Yes.
John Kern?
Yes.
Bruce Whitezer?
Yes.
Nick Vaskas?
Yes.
Darlene Bailey?
Yes. Okay, now we will have the oath of office, so could our two new board members please come forward?
Okay, for agenda item 12, we'll administer the oath of office to the newly-elected board members. Board policy G-255A requires that successful board candidates shall take an oath of office to faithfully perform the duties of the office as required by law to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Missouri, and the laws made pursuant thereto. Becky will administer the oath. Please stand and raise your right hand and repeat after Becky.
I swear.
I'll swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Missouri.
The Constitution of the state of Missouri.
I'll marry. The duties of school director.
The duties of school director.
In and for District Number One.
In and for District Number One.
Bounty of Clay, State of Missouri.
Bounty of Clay, State of Missouri.
Yes. John.
Oh, yeah.
Same dude.
Yeah. Am I, you just want the signature? Yeah. Cap on your pants. Oh, I'm gonna save. I'm trying to leave already.
Probably.
Way out the door, I don't know. Maybe you would have to see if his family's...
Oh, no.
He's not leaving, his family's...
Oh, he's leaving. Again, I did. I bet you a hundred dollars.
Right there.
Oh, damn.
I'll bet you.
Give me my money. Goodbye.
Doesn't matter, put a seat.
Take a seat.
Welcome, friends. I'm not moving.
John took his place because he couldn't get the, get it out of there, so Jason just had to hold his up himself.
Jason, I'll just put this right here. It's still you, it's still you.
Thanks, Ray.
Oh, there we go. Thanks, Ray.
Saved me.
Ray saved us.
Okay, now that the board members are sworn in, uh, agenda item 13A is the election of the President of the Board of Education. The floor is now open for nominations.
I nominate Darlene Bailey as President of the Board.
Darlene Bailey has been nominated. Are there any other nominations?
Sounds just great.
Anyone?
Hearing none, uh, the board will now, uh, vote via roll call.
Just one second, let me get this.
I didn't read all that in red. You want me to do like...
That's okay.
Okay. Officially.
You can't be VP again if you can't read that.
It's red, I can't read it.
Sorry. Okay. Matt Baker?
Yes.
Jason Clint?
Aye.
Christina Lindsay?
Aye.
Bruce Whitezer?
Yes.
Nick Vaskas?
Yes.
Darlene Bailey?
Yes. Okay, next is the election of the Vice President. The floor is open for nominations.
I would like Bruce Whitezer to serve as Vice President of the Carney School Board during the 2025-2026 school year.
It sounded official.
I ran one on the page.
Good job.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, the board will now vote via roll call.
Matt Baker?
Yes.
Jason Clint?
Aye.
Christina Lindsay?
Yes.
Bruce Whitezer?
Yes.
Nick Vaskas?
Yes.
Darlene Bailey?
Yes. Board member will, board members will assume their new positions. I don't think anybody has to move. Next, we have approval of district designations.
Move to approve Doug Schwinn as, did I say the pronoun right? As treasurer?
Did she say that right?
Did I say that correctly? Sorry, thank you. As treasurer, and Leanne Bradbury as alternate treasurer, and approve Becky Burkemper